The candidates for Miramar City Commission seat number three on the March 11th ballot. Three candidates in the race, all three are here. I'm going to introduce them in alphabetical order, which I think is the way they will appear on the ballot. Avril Sheressard, Nary Tomlinson, and Keith Papa Keith Walcott. So thank you all for participating and being here this morning, much appreciated. And with me is my colleague Dan Sweeney, the deputy opinion editor. And we will make an endorsement in this race. I'm going to start, we're going to get down the line in alphabetical order for this opening question. Ms. Sheressard, tell us why you're running and tell us why you're the best candidate for this office.
Thank you so much, Steve. Thank you, Danny, for this opportunity to share. I'm Avril Sheressard and I am the city of Miramar. I decided to run for a seat in the city of Miramar because I saw the challenges that our city faces with regards to affordable housing, our funding, and some complaints in general from our residents about the direction that our city is going. As I move around the city that I've lived in for the past 15 years consecutively, I am a taxpayer and I've earned the right to be critical of the future of our city. I want to be the voice for change. I want to be a voice to speak up for those who feel as though we should have representation and that our city should support us financially with regards to how we pay our taxes and what we get from the city for our tax dollars. I love the city of Miramar because it's where I've raised my kid. It's the only city he's ever known. It's the city I've paid taxes into and I want to see us grow into the city that my son can live in comfortably when he's my age. I want to represent the city because I am the city of Miramar.
All right, thanks very much. Avril, how old is your son?
He's 10 years old.
Where does he go to school?
He goes to school at Coral Cove Elementary, just off of Bass Creek Road and 148.
Was Coral Cove one of those elementary schools that was on the preliminary list of schools to be consolidated or closed?
Coral Cove came up looking pretty scary for what was going to happen with regards to the repurposing of the schools. However, along with our PTA, we banded together and we decided we were going to fight for our school to stay open because our school houses some of the brightest minds in academics and academy for the city of Miramar. And we fought and recently, just at the end of January, we were allowed to go to K through eight. So our school will survive and I will fight for the other schools in the area.
And tell me what you personally did as part of the community effort to keep Coral Cove open.
I attended the meetings that they had at Heinz Middle, I think that was. I actually agreed with the PTA on the purpose for the school. I was a part of the petitioning that the school had to change from a elementary to a K through eight and helped with the naming as well. So I've been an advocate and I've also met with Rebecca, who is the school board district representative about the matter as well.
Okay, just one other question for you in this round. You mentioned early on in your opening statement that you've heard complaints from people with the direction the city is going.
Yes, yes.
We'd like you to be much more specific about that.
There are some in the city who feel as though we are losing our feeling of community. Like it's too displaced. We're not a unified city. We have complaints about the events not being intercultural as opposed to being a multicultural city. They want more unity among all sides of Miramar.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for those comments. We'll certainly get back to you momentarily. Nary Tomlinson, thank you for being here. The same question for you, sir. You know, why are you running and why are you the best candidate?
All right. So hi, I'm Nary Tomlinson, running for Miramar Commission C3. I'm running because I have been a resident for 30 years, 30 plus years actually. And my background lends itself to legislation. I understand this stuff. I have been involved for the past five years, actually with the city, sitting on two boards. I'm raising my family, sorry, my two kids in the city, along with my wife. And I just do have a vested interest in the direction of the city. I see, like my fellow candidate, I see the way, the direction that the city's going. And I too hear a lot of disdain about, you know, events being thrown that, or too many events being thrown. Not enough services being rendered for the amount of taxes that we pay. The utilities being, you know, a lot for, you know, what we're getting. And especially, I want to see representation from the east side. As the only candidate that lives on the east side of Miramar, as the only candidate that has been, you know, living on the east side of Miramar, I think that I do have a unique voice and a, you know, a point to get across about, you know, the things that the city needs.
Okay, thank you very much. When you say there are not, you hear the complaints of not enough services in the city, what's a specific example of that?
So the level of servicing, I should say, a specific example is the amount of police coverage, you know, especially in the historic neighborhoods. Recently, the coverage has gone from a 12 police detail down to a 10 police detail. And this is directly related to budgetary concerns. Recently, the public service had to go to the city commission to get, you know, more funds because it was used up. And I know it's because of, you know, a lot of these events. Police have to staff these events, which then, you know, take away from the time and the budgeted hours that they can spend actually on duty in the streets of Miramar. And that's a big problem for, you know, the east side especially.
Okay, before we go any further, by the way, I'll ask you this question, Mr. Tomlinson. All three of you candidates are running for the first time or you're new candidates in this election. Why is this seat open? Why is there no incumbent in this seat?
So actually, I'm running for the second time.
Okay.
I ran in 2021 against Mr. Barnes. And the reason why this seat is open in this race is because he decided, you know, he just didn't qualify. I don't know, I don't have, you know, a relationship with him, an extensive relationship with him. But he just decided not to, you know, put his hat in the ring.
Okay, that's right. Winston Barnes decided he wasn't going to run again.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that you're the only candidate who lives in east Miramar. Help us with geography, especially for those watching this who don't live in Miramar. What's the imaginary dividing line between east and west Miramar?
So I would, for, so I would say historic Miramar. I wouldn't say there's an east and a west Miramar, right? So the historic Miramar would be from university to 441, from county line up to Pembroke Road. That's really the geography of historic Miramar.
Okay, I understand that. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here, but if somebody says, I live in east Miramar, what area are they describing?
If someone were to say, you know, colloquially, I'm living in east Miramar, I would say this is the older part of Miramar from, I would say Douglas, Douglas East to Miramar Parkway. I grew up in the Knowles neighborhood, which is in between Douglas and University Drive, right? I used to consider River Run west Miramar, you know? So.
Okay, all right, great. Let's go to Papa Keith Walcott. And Keith, the same question for you, sir. Why are you running and why are you the best candidate?
I'm running because I want to see something happen for our youth mainly in the city of Miramar. I've advocated for our youth consistently over the last 10 years, tri-county wide. And it became increasingly frustrating to kind of pop into these communities and do pop-ups, do different events, and know that I'm not really creating any legacy change. So I was advised, like, if I really want to create the change that I'm looking to do, I have to do it from within. And why not start with the city that I love and the city that I live in, which is Miramar? So I decided to take all the efforts that I've been doing tri-county wide and put those in the city of Miramar. The youth is not completely my focus. It's definitely important to me because I do believe they need our help the most. And because they're not voting or they're not heavily voting, politicians tend to not look out for them. And I definitely want to be a voice for them, but a voice for everyone in Miramar. Not just the youth, but our seniors, our middle class. You know, the thing about Miramar is, and I just want to say.
Way over to the left.
Say that again?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Okay. The thing about the city of Miramar, the beautiful thing is very diverse. It's not a monolith. So if you ask a person in west Miramar, how they feel about Miramar person and historic Miramar person and central Miramar, they'll all have different answers. I'm a man of the people. I'm not a career politician. I have even no interest in being considered a politician. I'm a community leader and I want to bring those energies into Miramar and make it a better place and protect the future of Miramar. You know, a city that I have had such an amazing relationship with over the last 30 years. I want to see continued movement. It's a very progressive city to begin with.
Would you, Keith, would you tell me what you mean specifically by being a youth advocate?
Meaning that there needs to be more services and programs for our youth. This will help with crime. This will help keep them off of their phones and into programs, help them with jobs in their future. They need more direction. You have parents that are working two and three jobs right now in Miramar in the middle class just to pay for their homes. So it's very difficult for them to raise their children. They need some assistance. And the city needs to step up and help with some of that in terms of bringing programs to Miramar.
How long have you lived in the city?
Off and on 15 years.
Tell us about a city board, city commission, a city-related volunteer effort you've been involved in.
Like I said previously, my efforts have been, as a radio personality, tri-county wide. So I have not been on a board in the city of Miramar. My efforts have been more tri-county wide and this is why now, this is the reason I want to invest into Miramar.
Can you give us a specific reason right now as to what it is about your candidacy that makes you better than either Avril or Mr. Tomlinson?
Well, I can talk about myself, not so much better than Avril and Mr. Tomlinson. I think they're really good candidates and, you know, I don't want to speak in that kind of manner. What I would say is that I am a man of the people and I've served this community at large. And I listen to all of our residents in the city of Miramar since I've been canvassing and working and talking to them. I take 10 years of experience working with other politicians, working with other cities, and I'm bringing all of that energy just to focus on Miramar. So I think me with that tri-county experience, bringing it to Miramar is going to be amazing. You know, it's going to be a blessing to the city.
Okay, thank you. We're going to resume the questioning now with my colleague Dan Sweeney.
Yes, sir. I'm getting my mic turned on there. I have one real quick question about fundraising. Mr. Walcott, your financial records that you've filed with the Miramar clerk show that you've raised a little more than $20,000 in this race, 13,000 of it from loans. I want to make sure that I have it right, the other two candidates in this race. Have you not raised any money yet in this race? That's what, according to the city elections website, that's what it looks like. Ms. Sheressard, go ahead.
I'll go ahead first. So I filed my application to be in this race as a candidate on February 8th. At that point, I was past the cutoff time for any reporting for a campaign account. I did not have a campaign account open as of the date for filing. So you won't have an update on how much I have raised until the February 14th filing. At that time.
You said February 8th when you started. You mean January 8th, right?
January 8th, yes. So there wasn't a reporting place. So nothing online is visible for how much my campaign has raised since then. I recently had a campaign kickoff and I don't want to quote numbers that aren't correct, but it's somewhere in between, in terms of funds raised between January 8th and now, somewhere in the area of $28,000. And that'll be on the next set of reports. And if it's hired by then, you'll be able to see when it's reported on February 14th.
Fair enough. How about you, Mr. Tomlinson? Turn your mic on, please.
So I have not raised any, well, I didn't raise any money as of December 31st. Since then, I've raised in the ballpark of about $2,000. I'm not a fundraiser, you know? I just, you know, stick to the issues. I recently had a fundraiser on Friday, my scoop and support event. That's where we raised a bulk of the money, but most of it since that point has been self-funded.
Okay, I want to get into some of the questions, you know, a little more explanation of what we were talking about in the questionnaires. We asked about the, what is probably the biggest contentious issue in the city right now, which is the incinerator that Dade wants to build just south of the county line. Although it may not want to build anymore, given that the Miami Dade mayor just sort of flipped on this issue in the last week. Do you consider that now to be, to be a dead issue? Or is this still something the city of Miramar needs to vigorously oppose, even though the Miami Dade mayor seems like she's coming around to not placing it there? Mr. Walcott, why don't we start with you?
Thank you for the opportunity. No, we have to stay on them and I stand with the mayor on that. We definitely went out to the meeting, the workshop, and we just have to be consistent, you know? You don't let off the gas. It's not done yet. So I think we do need to be consistent with our outrage and, you know, letting Miami Dade County know that this is unacceptable for us and our residents here in Miramar. So we're going to keep our foot on the gas with this one, sir.
What more needs to be done? Or do you think the city's response so far has been, you know, adequate?
It's been good. It's been good, but I just don't want to let up, you know? I just don't want it to let up. I want it to just, you know, ride it out until the end, until we understand what's happening with the incinerator.
What about you, Mr. Tomlinson?
Yeah, I would echo the thoughts of my colleague right here. Yeah, I think that we still need to advocate for smarter solutions. I think honestly, this is like a reverse tragedy of the commons to quote illegal, to quote legal jargon. I think that there has to be a better approach to waste management in South Florida in general. Because if everyone's handling, you know, waste management, or individually, then you're going to have a compounded problem. Waste management is already a problem. So I think that we need to have more of a global view in South Florida because, you know, this is the most densely populated place in Florida, right? In the country. So I think we do need to find smarter solutions and I don't think, you know, putting an incinerator there or, you know, anywhere, in fact, to just serve one county is a smart solution.
Okay, but if, you know, we're also endorsing in the Coconut Creek races. And if you go up there to Coconut Creek, they're not talking about incinerators. They're talking about the expansion of the landfill, what they often refer to as Mount Trackmore. You know, and there, you know, so they're saying the same thing. We need to be smarter about how we do this. We can't just go 100 feet higher and 20 acres wider at the Monarch Hill landfill facility. You're saying we can't build an incinerator in Dade. What is the smart solution here to get rid of all this garbage?
So I'm not an expert on it, but I'm willing to find out, you know, is there, are there better ways? You know, because just like, you know, Coconut Creek has a different outlook on what they want to do with, you know, their trash mountain. I think that we all need to come to the table to figure out something that's going to benefit everybody, right? Now, if, hey, Coconut Creek needs to go wider and taller, then maybe that could help us by, you know, transporting our trash there or just finding different ways to dispose of this trash because it's, you know, it's a pervasive problem. You know, and like I said, I'm not an expert, but I'm willing to do the research and find out, you know, what's out there.
And I'll, you know, to make clear that, you know, that's something the county is talking about doing. But just like Dade is talking of building this incinerator and the city of Miramar is very opposed, Broward County is talking about possibly expanding this landfill and, which is right next to Coconut Creek, and they are very opposed to that. So Ms. Sheressard, what do you think about what's been done so far regarding the incinerator in Miramar? And address some of the other stuff that was said too about, you know, what alternatives do you think there ought to be offered?
So I'm not sure if everyone here is aware, but I do have extensive experience in public policy. One, I studied public administration for my graduate degree and I've worked for the public services system as a, as an adjudicator, as a hearing officer for quite a few years. I understand that there's a policy that has to be considered as the underlying backbone for the decisions that the city of, that the county of Miami Dade is making with this incinerator. I sit at that meeting and I came to the conclusion after hearing all the county commissioners speak and hearing the mayor propose and hearing them decline to continue on with her conversation, this is going to be going on for a while. I walked out of that meeting in agreement with everyone who wore those green shirts that we will have to really fight harder because her position and her proof is something that her actual commission has already shut down. So they will be back to the drawing board so many more times. It is not off the table. We cannot let off because the adversity that I heard towards her suggestion of continuing to do landfill was met with so much vigor. The commissioners don't want it. They don't want her plan. They want to move forward, leaving the incinerator on the table. We cannot come off of their necks. We have to fight continually because the policy that will be put in place, the city of Miramar may not like it. Now, with regards to alternatives, the city has done a great job in hiring the attorney for someone who's an attorney who deals with the environment and setting aside funds to make sure that we not only fight with our green shirts, but that we fight with, with an attorney and that we fight with policies that say this is bad for the environment, that we do studies, we do environmental things to prove that you can still do landfills because that's where the city of Miami, well, Miami Dade County can still do. They can still, and it saves them more money to continue with the landfills. So the incinerator topic is not going away and we need to be prepared to stay on their necks with it because it could come in our backyard, but we are not having it because not in our backyard.
All right. From what I understand, the decision of Mr. Barnes to not run for office was kind of a shock to everybody. He just simply didn't qualify by the end of qualifying day, is that right? No announcements, nothing like that? Okay, has he since then endorsed anyone in this race or anything like that? Or has anyone heard anything about his intentions? Mr. Walcott, go ahead.
Yes, he's given me his endorsement and I'm very grateful for it. And, you know, I think he just believes it's just time. You know, he served over 22 years, the city with integrity. And, you know, he wants to just move on to his next plans in life.
When we interviewed for endorsements in this, in this race, three years ago, four years ago, we wound up not endorsing Mr. Barnes. One of the things that we sort of, kind of shocked us was when we found out that he didn't have any, any office time or staff to take calls from people. And when we asked him about that, he said, if people have problems, they can call into my radio show. You know, which is, you know, classic response from the man. But as far as we are concerned, the editorial board, that is not necessarily the level of access to a public official that you ought to be offering voters. So, Mr. Walcott, are you keeping with that tradition or are we?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. And my cume is a lot wider in terms of radio than Mr. Barnes is. But absolutely not. As I launched my campaign, I gave out my phone number. And if you dial that number, 754-295-9554, it will interrupt this call right now because it rings directly to me. I've had a career of being accessible to my constituents on the radio and I'm going to do the same for the residents of Miramar. I actually enjoy it and embrace it.
Thank you. One other, you know, the incinerator thing is sort of the big thing right now. But there's a couple of other issues that are long ongoing issues between Dade and Miramar. One of which is in the western part of the city, blasting from a rock mine in Dade around the Miami Lakes. A lot of people in the western part of Miramar say it's caused cracks in their houses. It's caused foundations to shift and all that kind of thing. Are you familiar with this issue and what can the city possibly do to address it? Ms. Sheressard, we'll start with you.
I am actually, I'm absolutely familiar with the issue. I'm on the affordable housing board for the city of Miramar. And I liaison fairly often with people who are members of the blasting committee and also as a resident of the city of Miramar continuously for the past 12 months. I know absolutely how the people who I know live in that community feel about the blasting. In general conversation, prior to this whole election cycle, I've been hearing conversations from my friends about their homes. I always ask them about the foundation shifting because I'm a public adjuster. So I ask, first of all, what's the condition of your house first? I know the noise is a nuisance. Tell me about the structure of your home. They're talking about the issues with water, the movement of the water behind their homes, the movement of the actual house and just the fact that you can't comfortably enjoy your home. Quiet enjoyment is one of the rights you have when you own a property. They don't have quiet enjoyment. It's, noise nuisance is one of the most frustrating because it's external. The problem is it's not benefiting Miramar residents, but it's hurting their quality of life. So the city of Miramar has, has been contentious about the blasting. As far as legal recourse, I think they've made some attempts to address the blasting. And the question is, it's hard rock and it needs that powerful of a blast so that we can acquire this material so that our builders can be happy. Give and take, we want growth, we want building. It requires this amount of rock. But should it be to the degree that it's disturbing people's livelihoods and their homes? And no, and if it gets to the point where more homes are actually having those foundation cracks and issues, we need to actually file some sort of suit to protect our homes because we're the city of Miramar. It's not for us, but our homes are affected.
Mr. Tomlinson, what do you think? I know a lot of this is kind of, has gone up to Tallahassee and the state level or anything. What can, what can happen locally to try to address the issue?
So I think that, you know, all we can do as a city is provide resources to maybe insulate from noise pollution, to maybe reassure foundation breaks. Because from what I understand, this rock quarry has been there forever since before West Miramar has been there, right? So legally, we, or the West Miramar residents, wouldn't have any recourse because you can't go to a nuisance and say, hey, or you can't buy a property by a nuisance and say, hey, this is causing me problems, right? That's just, it's not legally feasible to do that. So I think that it would be incumbent on the city to provide more resources to, you know, like I said, shore up the foundation, maybe provide tax rebates to say, hey, you know, since you're going through this, maybe we could take a little bit off your avalorum, you know? Or even though, you know, the city needs it. But to make over there seem a little bit more enticing because honestly, in my legal opinion, there really isn't anything that is going to come from, you know, complaining legally other than maybe curtailing the hours of operation. I think that'll be good, but as far as like, you know, canceling it out or, you know, stopping it, like, I don't think that's feasible.
Understood. It's largely mitigation at this point. Mr. Walcott, do you have anything to add to that?
I mean, my colleagues are pretty much nailed it. It's just an unfortunate situation. But, you know, all unfortunate situations can be addressed properly. And I think some maybe negotiating and sitting down with the rock quarry and trying to find out what a solution could be, that they can continue to do their business, but our residents could be a lot happier than they are right now with the noise. Destroying the foundation though, you know, of homes, you know, that's really, really serious because, you know, you crack a foundation and that's it. So, you know, I do have a lot of concerns, you know, about that, with that. And, you know, and that's something that definitely needs to be addressed if that is, you know, really happening like that. You know, that's a problem.
Ms. Sheressard, when we asked, you know, at the beginning of this conversation, that, you know, what you're really running for, Mr. Walcott said, you know, zeroed in on youth programs and, you know, things of that nature. Um, if you could have sort of one, like one program, one topic that you would really want to, to, to just grab by the throat and really change, should you be elected, what would it be?
So one thing that I'm really, really, really strong about is making sure that in this climate as of, well, for most people as of January 20th, a lot of people are afraid of how their financial picture will look in the next four years. The bulk of what most people pay is into their taxes for their property, for their insurance for their property and the mortgage for their property. So a huge chunk of our personal finances is related to our homeownership, either acquiring it or maintaining it. I am huge on making sure that the people who live in Miramar, one, have representation for the taxes that they do pay. Two, that they have, um, disposable incomes, that they're comfortable enough with how much they're paying to have disposable income so that they can support the community. That the people who have chosen Miramar as their home can afford to stay here, support the businesses and have their families taken care of with the community events, with the community services so that they're satisfied and don't have to leave the city. I'm listening to seniors, I'm listening to parents and I'm listening to the middle class. A lot of middle-class, um, residents in Miramar with our average income around $87,000 never qualify for any type of help to either acquire their home or maintain their home. They're always just above that little bit of, um, that little window of difference between getting support and losing everything they have because their bills are upon them. So really, when it comes down to it, it's the personal finances of the Miramar family that I hope to really, really make sweeter.
Um, you, you, a, a lot of your answer there, uh, you, you mentioned taxes. Do you think taxes in Miramar are currently too high as far as the millage rate and all that?
Actually, it's not even what I think. Miramar on average has some of the highest taxes in the state of Florida. And the city of Miramar's millage at 7.12 is much higher than Broward County's average. So yeah, they say a higher.
Okay, um, Mr. Tomlinson, uh, uh, same original question to you. If there's like one topic that you really would want to make sure gets addressed during your term in office, what would it be?
I would say looking at the budget, um, just reducing, uh, first of all, reducing the amount of events that we have. We have three events like every week in the city of Miramar, which take away from what Ms. Charisard said, ours, the services that we receive. Like she said, we do pay a lot of taxes, but we're not receiving the amount of services that, uh, it should be a portion to the amount of taxes that we're taking. And also, um, to, to, in opposition to what she said, $87,000 is the average for all of Miramar, right? Now, when we're looking at the historic part, it's 49,000 in those historic districts, 49,000, right? So yes, the, the property taxes are killing these, um, these seniors that are living on fixed incomes, right? That can't afford to stay in their houses, that then have to turn around and sell their houses because maybe definitely their kids can't live here because thank God my mother-in-law kept her house. So that's who, that's whose house we live in now, kept her house. Um, because if I were to come out of law school, even coming out of law school, making what I make, I still couldn't afford a house in, uh, in Miramar. Historic Miramar houses are averaging like 550,000, right? And that's the least, right? So, um, seniors are getting price out of their houses. And, um, then it's not getting passed down, uh, through generations. Then, you know, I would say outsiders are coming in here, Airbnb and properties out. So I do think that, you know, there needs to be something to address the budgetary issues so that one, we can provide services on par with the millage that we pay. And two, to provide some type of relief to the people that have been here that have, you know, even paid their house off, that are adding to the, to the fiber of the community so that they can have something to pass down to their children. Maybe some programs, um, uh, tax relief, something like that. Because we, Miramar has the money. It's just, we need to find a better place to put it.
Well, uh, you, you, you kicked off by, by, by mentioning the budget. What, what's the, what's the budget for fiscal year 2025? And, and where exactly would you look at, at, at cutting from? Cause you know, that's, there's, you know, things like public safety and utilities and that, that sort of stuff. You're, you're kind of baked in costs, right? So what is the total budget for fiscal year, for this fiscal year? And where are you looking to cut from?
So it's around 400 million, if I'm not mistaken. Um, maybe give, no, maybe take some, around 400 million. Um, it's definitely more than 300. Um, where I would take from is the, the event fund or whatever they call it. Um, the, the community activities. Now I have, I have two.
Cultural, cultural affairs?
Cultural affairs, let's say. Um, I have two kids. I love events, right? Don't get me wrong, I like the events. I need something to do with my kids on the weekend, right? But we have to find a smarter way to do it. Um, eh, I would cut from that. Um, well, yes, I would definitely cut from it. Find a better way to do it. Um, nowhere else, honestly, because if we cut, I would say, you know, a few percent, maybe less than 10%, then we could, you know, cover the amount of money it needs to provide full coverage to Eastern Miramar, so to say, right? Because we're, we're running around on a skeleton crew, you know, especially at night where most of the crime happens, even though, you know, Miramar isn't, you know, a crime-ridden city, thank God. Um, still, like these officers are overworked. You know, you could ask them yourself. So that, that's where I would cut, 5% of that, 10%, you know, it'll go a long way.
Five or 10% out of, out of the cultural affairs budget?
Exactly.
Okay. Um, Mr. Walcott, uh, he mentioned the budget around 400 million and that, I think that's right. The fiscal year 2025 is like 446 million. Cultural affairs is only about 5 million of that. Uh, so what, what do you think? Can the city tighten its belt? And if so, from where?
They have a point, but there's a lot of other ways. I mean, I, you know, just me being in the business, uh, and, and doing events as well. There, there's other ways, like for instance, uh, when Miramar keeps an event and, um, like just say the New Year's Eve event, it was amazing, I was there.
Hey, pardon the interruption, real, real quick. Do you, 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 you mentioned you do events. Do you, do you have any city contracts? Do you do any events for the city?
No, sir.
Okay, carry on.
All right. Um, so when I, when I went to the New Year's Eve event, it was a beautiful event, but I was out there campaigning, uh, talking to the constituents. And if I spoke to 10 people, 10 people, three of them out of the 10 actually lived in Miramar. So my mind automatically went to, hmm, so Pembroke Pines and Davie and Miami Gardens, they're all enjoying a Miramar event for free. So listen, my focus is Miramar. That's, that, that's, that's it. You, you know, so in terms of keeping an event and doing things, Miramar residents free, no problem. Anybody else who's not a Miramar resident, you have to cough up. And that will help to pay for some of the cost and, and, and help out that budget greatly. So that's, that's my opinion on that one.
All right, well, look, um, uh, Steve, I, I want to give you a chance to ask any questions you want. We've been talking for about 45 minutes. If you don't have anything else, I was going to have everybody do a, a, a one-minute summation, but go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the help there here, Dan. Um, I've got a biographical question for Keith Walcott. Keith, tell us what, what radio station you're on.
I'm on 103.5 The Beat.
Okay.
It's a hip hop and R and B station here in South Florida.
Okay, very good, great. Um, do you have the opportunity or the leeway in, i- i- in your work on that radio station to tell listeners, hey, you know, this is Papa Keith Walcott, I'm running for the Miramar City Commission? Do you tell listeners you're running for public office?
I'm currently off of the radio. I still do business here, but, uh, during my campaign, I've taken a leave of absence.
Okay, and, and is, was there a reason for that?
Because of the campaign, respectfully. Uh, FCC does have its rules as well, uh, equal time rules. So if I'm on the radio, um, even if I'm not talking about the campaign, uh, my candidates would be, um, able to get equal time on the radio. So, um, I had no interest in talking about my campaign. I talked to a cume of 300,000 people and, you know, versus Miramar, so it wouldn't make sense, it wouldn't be fair to my listeners. Uh, so I didn't do it, I don't do it, and I'm not on the radio right now, talking.
Can you tell me Keith, something that, uh, can you isolate something that you think the city of Miramar is spending far too much money on? Even perhaps wasting money on a certain program or service?
Yes, I think Miramar is, is pretty top-heavy in a lot of areas. Um, I think it, it could be cleaned up a bit, uh, from the inside. I think there's a lot of, uh, extra jobs, I might say, that are happening within the city, uh, that are going out to people, that are paying them, you know, a really good wage. And, uh, I think we could clean up some, some of that. Um, my colleagues also spoke about certain events and I've already discussed the fact that, you know, we can kind of balance that out a bit there. But I do believe that Miramar is top-heavy. You know, I'm here for the, for the people and, and, and any money should go back to putting it into the people and not serving our friends and families. And I'm going to stand on that.
All right, thank you very much. Dan, that was my last question, so I'll, I'll let you wrap up, that's okay, yep. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Charisard has her, has her hand up.
Yes, I am sorry. I, I wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity because the budget question came after I gave my response. So if you would allow me a minute to speak on the budget, so I can say.
If you had something to, to add to that, absolutely.
Yes, I did, I absolutely did. So I'm one who, who attends a lot of the city commission meetings. And one thing I've garnered is staff is extremely critical to the city of Miramar. They are paid a, a living wage. With regards to the budget though, the retirement and benefit package is a part of why the budget is top-heavy for across all employees. The post-release from your job, you have a really sweet package that's funded now by taxpayers. Um, there's other places in the budget, there's actually a program and I'm not going to say exactly what it is, but it, it may come up, it, when I am a commissioner for the city, that we're paying into, to the tune of maybe $175,000 a year. And don't press me on it because I'm, I shouldn't be speaking out aloud about it, but I will address that thing in the budget that is costing us some money, but we're not at this time getting anything from it. I went line by line through the most recent 2025 budget and I looked at what fire costs, police costs, um, the cost of living increases that are coming and they're reasonable. But across, across that budget, there are several places you can kind of, do we need to, do, do we need to pay that much for this retirement benefit? Do we need to include that? There's other spaces and as mentioned before, the events budget.
All right, thank you very much. Hey, I'm going to give, uh, uh, everybody a chance to sort of do their elevator pitch. Uh, you know, if you were in, uh, if you had a minute with a, uh, a, a voter, a potential constituent, and, uh, you want to tell them, here's exactly why you should vote for me, uh, what's your spiel? And, uh, I, I believe we started off, uh, going in, in alphabetical order, so we'll, we'll wrap up this conversation, reverse alphabetical order. Your microphone's off.
I thought you were going to say ladies first, but, um, but, uh, no problem, I get it. Um, listen, I've been an advocate for community, like I said, uh, tri-county-wide for so long. I really want to get involved in the city of Miramar, in my community, the city that I love, the city that I've been representing, a city that I grew up in, uh, a city that my kids grew up in, went to school in. You know, my friends own businesses in, own homes in. It, it means a lot to me. I actually felt bad that I hadn't thought of doing this because I, I was actually scared at first. I thought I would lose a part of myself, um, you know, going into this role. Um, but I started realizing more and more, you know, how much I'm needed in this role and how much my experience of advocating is really needed, you know? And moving more as a advi- advocate for the city versus as a politician, you know, caring about the people and their needs, being able to be connected with everyone in our city. Our Latino voters, our seniors, our youth, our middle-class. You know, giving everyone an opportunity to have a voice is really important to me and as what I've stood on for years as a human being and as a radio personality. So I'm just excited to bring all of that to the city of Miramar in that commissioner seat number three in this upcoming election, March 11th.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tomlinson, go ahead.
Okay, so I should become the commissioner of Miramar for C3 because I'm the one with the most experience in municipal government in this race. Um, much respect to both of my colleagues, much respect. But I feel that I have a voice to speak for those people, especially on the east side that have been forgotten. I have the experience, law school, historic board of Miramar, chairman for three years, education board of Miramar. I used to teach, I'm a professor. I have the requisite knowledge and experience to take what I have learned to advocate for the people of not only East Miramar, but all of Miramar. I think a commissioner should be the elected official, the closest to the people. So not only will I be accessible, but I will be a constant, constant reminder to the people and the commissioners at Broward County, to the people, uh, the legislators at the state level to say, hey, Miramar, it's one of your most valuable cities in the state of Florida. We need more resources. We need to be, you know, on the forefront of your legislation. There's things that are in Miramar that, that are affecting people. There, there's, there's state-run facilities that are affecting people in Miramar that Miramar, we don't have enough of a say in, right? So I'll take my knowledge and experience. I will be at the county board of commissioners, the state legislative level. I'll be advocating for the people of Miramar eh, because I have the knowledge, experience to do all of that stuff. All right, so thank you, that's it.
Thanks, and, uh, uh, Ms. Charisard, uh, please bring us on.
I'm Avril Charisard. I am Miramar. I am not here making promises because, uh, if anyone has received anything from me, I have proven. Sitting in the Miramar commission seat number three requires a multi-pronged, multi-capability person. Let's talk about service. One thing we are doing right now is we're looking to be hired by 140,000 Miramar residents. And I don't want to focus on one small section of Miramar. I live in the middle of Miramar and I have advantage of both sides and I'm engulfed in both sides. Yo hablo español, yo hablo con todo en esta ciudad. I am the most multicultural to start. I'm married to a Haitian man, I'm a Bahamian immigrant and all of my friends are from very, very diverse places. I have served within the city of Miramar for a very long time, since purchasing my home in 2010 and I have never left the city of Miramar. All of my accolades, all of my volunteerism, all of my political involvement has been to fight for the city that I actually pay taxes in and have the right to, um, be critical of how it's going. I've been an advocate for the condo community, I've been an advocate for the HOA community. I have fed seniors in the city of Miramar. I have worked alongside current and past commissioners to do the work of a commissioner without the budget and without the resources that they have. I'm now fighting for a bigger platform to serve the city that I have been committed to unquestionably for the past 15 years with my time, my resources and my finances. I'm doing this because my son is the heart of this and I want him to remain a Miramar resident safely, happily with me as a commissioner. I'm here to do it for everyone in Miramar and that's my move.
All right, thank you very much. And, uh, you know, I know we didn't get to every issue, um, but, uh, if you have any follow-up points that you want to make, please feel free to email Steve and I, uh, any further information you have and we'll, we'll certainly consider it as we are not, uh, planning on publishing an endorsement, uh, in this race for at least, uh, uh, at, at least another week or so. So, uh, thank you very much and, uh, and we will, uh, we'll talk again.